Uh, good morning, good evening. The zoning board appeals to the town of New Canaan will come to order. I'm ready for twenty point. We're in this September eleventh, twenty twenty three. When we call your case, we ask that each presenter come up to the left turn, identify themselves and appropriate your question. State your request to the board and identify your hardship and the reasons for the request. Remember, your hardship cannot be of financial nature. It runs with the land and is peculiar to your property. I think that means particularly your property. The board will then ask questions of you, after which you will sit down and we will give you those present a chance to speak. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions as some of your requests. We record the meetings. Everyone must speak into the microphone and state their name. The board will then go into business session, discuss and make a decision. There are five board members of the board and it takes four positive votes to begin the variance. For um, hearing for the night, two seventy down for rich, zoning variance. David Ritchie, Lambert, two good Ritchie, I thought I was three, three Kimberly. Having on variance section, three point five E three, two ladder, who's hoping thirty three point four feet and thirty three point five feet. In lieu of the thirty five foot side, yeah, set back major zone at two seventy down for rich, not twenty five, plus thirteen point nineteen.
We need to do a ton of this and we need to see where we alternate this.
Okay.
So, I agree with that.
Yes.
This is Fabian.
President.
Um, Rich Carey too.
President.
Dustin and Farden.
President.
Sandra Doyle.
Brittany.
Brittany.
President.
And you'll be on here.
Present.
Brittany and Christie, which one did either of you? Or either one of you seated for the last year? Minutes here, so.
Both were, I think they alternated.
Okay, um, yes, Christie then.
Okay.
They'll be seated, so Brittany, just really everyone else won't go into business session. You can't say anything else. But besides that, we're Democratic board, everyone gets to talk here. Long as we're respectful, we get other members.
Do you have a free contract here?
Uh, is that Mark's name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's someone on the screen and.
Yeah, the full contact.
Okay. It does still bring off that. Ron Calquer.
They're my sister.
My son, David, he's sitting right in front of my ear. All right, everyone comes jokes here. And my son is, my wife is on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, David Ritchie, uh, left turn Ritchie. I'm here this evening with uh, Kristen and Rudy Pepe. And uh, we're here for a very fifty seven eight down for today. I also have on the uh, new uh, Mark Smith Anderson, who is. Uh, sort of the subject of this application. So essentially what we have here is we have a um. In the old lot, uh, you can see that it's um, sitting on the seven four ridge road. Right, this lot right here is a one acre lot. Came from, um, it was created back in nineteen fifty three, this lot two one seven six. Um, this is the application, this is probably the way it looks today. Over the past, um, just properties in one acre zone. Uh, it's been upsown since the time around nineteen fifty six, we got upsown to the two acre zone. It is undersized for the lot, uh, for the lot area, the two acre zone, this lot has only one acre. Um, it is a triangular in shape, you can say in a regular shape. And you can see here in the back, uh, where the pool has been situated. Um, the property is just a single family residence right now. It has a garage, it's it's underneath the home, it's two, two, two car garage. Um, cut existing coverage on the property is three thousand two hundred and forty five square feet. And the allowable coverage is three thousand four hundred and eighty five square feet. Um, we're here this evening, uh, requesting a variance for the pool coping. Um, unfortunately, what happened in this particular instance was when the pool was put in, uh. It was inadvertently, um. The, what, what happened was the pool contractor had thought that you measured from the inside open of the pool, from the water out. You can do that, Darian does that, um, there's some other, um. Towns that also measured that way. And unfortunately, so when they did this and they put the actual coping in. You can see these two little areas of the coping here that are actually. Within setback, about seventeen eight inches apiece, both on, on your side yard. And unfortunately, um, we happened to came at the time, um. This is actually wasn't even the location they wanted to use and, but knowing that this was the only location that they thought it was going to fit in. This is what they ended up choosing, but nonetheless, um. Regardless of the fact that it's already here today, we need to prove to this board that we actually have a variance for this application. Um, and that, but for the fact that it's pretending it wasn't here and we came and requested a variance for this, these particular small. Encurpation into the setback. So here's just a picture of the property, just kind of where I tell you, it sits on the front of that important bridge road, will sit behind it. This is the pool area in the backyard of the property. And this tiny little, this uh, where I'm pointing to right here, that's actually where the uh, one of the setback violations is. You can see the pool here, once again, setback area. And here, I'm just where the thought of that is about thirty three feet. You can see it's very well screened, this particular piece of property. Um, and I'll go through that more as we get through these slides. This is the other edge. But you can set back here. Um, you can see that we're really far away from a lot of different properties here, we're about two hundred and ninety four thirty four to the west. This is the west green here of that particular line. Uh, there's actually a pool on, on this particular piece of property as well. Here's another picture of the line of the west, it's just looking north on the property, so you can see it very well screened from the applicant's pool. This is Land Trust property in here. This is looking from that edge of the pool back towards down the port ridge road. This is the house, uh, three ninety four bonus ridge. Here's your pool, I'm sorry, here's your pool, it's about three hundred and ninety four feet, once again. Significant screen on this property. And this is, this is the picture of that screen. The property line is kind of right here, but actually the stone wall, um, uh, asked like this property line, it's very sensitive, that's it in there. But once again, you see the east property line, tree.
David, so the property line is stone wall?
If not, no, no.
Like only. So it's like a foot inside.
Yeah, it's like a foot inside, and it's, I think, probably very close to where dispensing.
If the problem is survey at this point, I assume must have done.
Yeah, so what ended up happening was they went for a um, CO. And when they presented the CO, the pool, the coping, and when it got to zoning, they're like, well, you're coping. You, you, you measured from the wrong spot. So by measuring from the wrong spot, you actually put yourself in violation.
Have they have a licensed contractor who gets that close to the line and doesn't ask you how to find me? If you're going right up to the line. It's, it's hard, it's hard for me to imagine this back there.
The proposed survey that we signed off on in twenty twenty one showed everything in the setback and then only got the as well.
So they didn't build it according to.
Well, actually, if you look at, if you actually look at that, um, and we can go back to that. Who comes actually still outside in it, even the one that you signed off on. It shows the pool coping outside of it, um, but it shows the measurement from inside. So the measurement, if you're looking at it from the zoning perspective, like, oh, the measurement says X. But if you look at the actual picture of it, it still actually shows that outside coping, um, to the outside.
And who did that with?
The surveyor.
The surveyor, yeah.
The surveyor. So what happens is, you know, the pool company comes in, puts, said, this is where we're gonna put the pool. It's twenty five forty, um, the surveyor blocked it on your survey plan. They present it to the, the town, it runs through the permit process. It got signed off on, um, at that particular time, and then you come back later on with an as well, it says, okay, it was totally supposed to be built, but is it?
Because everybody that we signed off on in the memo that I've.
Right, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, so if you look at the memo, you can see that even on the one that's signed off, it's still a little bit outside of it.
I disagree with that.
Oh, really?
Um. So I didn't sign off on this permit, this was before I started.
It doesn't look like it.
Now it looks like it's within the set.
It is, it's very.
Around the pool that is clearly like the silk fence.
Yeah.
And that's what's over the setback.
Where?
In the memo that I wrote on the front here. There's a line.
You're right, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, I thought, I didn't, I didn't see the cell, but she's absolutely right.
So the issue.
I thought it was, I thought it was above that as well, the coping.
So the issue here that the server didn't build it, I mean, the pool company didn't build this corner of the server.
Correct. But all the. There was a survey, yeah. There was a survey, it went through the survey process. When it, when they, when they got the as built, it was outside, but. To, you know, in, in defense of the, of the pool contractor. He just was wrong about the zoning regulation.
So he's never done business in New Canaan before?
I mean, this is hard to imagine.
He, he has done this, I mean, I can let Mark talk to that when, when we get to that, would you like me to continue to go there or do you want to hear from Mark?
I guess why don't you go to us, I'm trying to figure out how this happened.
Okay.
Because I mean, a lot of times people don't get a survey, but I feel like they did their job, they went and did a survey, it's not like they. You know, besides go right to the survey and then it's over, because we see that sometimes, yeah, they, they did. The steps, you know, a lot of people don't get the survey and then they come after the fact, it's hard.
Right, no, I mean, every, everyone thought that they were doing it very close to the line. But in fact, it was inside the line.
Yeah.
That, and that's what the surveys were done, the problem is that. The measurement comes from outside the coping, it doesn't come from inside the water. And that was the mistake. That was made was that they were measuring from inside the water, the pool contractor, not from outside. And that was a mistake on their part. Which they feel terrible about and, you know, honestly.
And some towns do it, that you're saying Darian.
Yeah, Darian does it from the inside, the water inside out, we do it from the outside. So that's where the difference is.
What other towns say damage, is it normal to do it in a canyon way or is it normal to do it from the water way or maybe just.
Building company measures things from the edge of waters, or the state and international building code, so when you have a distance from a building, it's the edge of water, not the coping.
Okay.
Um, which I think is why most contractors think of edge of water, because it's building code, but as far as zoning regulations go, I'm not sure, just because, you know, this is what New Canaan does, or I haven't paid attention to what else.
Yeah, I think Mark's, when he's built a lot, I mean.
That's why.
Unfortunately, for the mistake that Mark made, Mark is very well known in this area and has been doing business for thirty five years. And he's never minded doing an issue like this before, and he's this is right, and honestly, he's embarrassed as anybody.
Yeah.
So, you know, he's not, thinks about being here either, but nonetheless, that's what happened.
And like moving the coping doesn't fix anything, you can't, because let's say you made the pool. A foot smaller instead of coping over the old pool, so there's really no way to fix it other than pulling it out, you would likely have.
We may, and Mark can say that, but it doesn't.
Yeah, I'll let Mark talk. Making the water smaller won't fix the problem.
Why don't I let Mark talk about some sort of carpet? Not that, pulling out the coping would, I'm not saying he would do that, but if you pulled out the coping and then no coping.
No, because the coping won't fix why.
Part of this.
Uh, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yeah, we're not talking like patio that's connected to the pool.
Yeah.
Where you could maybe pull it back, you know, if there was an issue, you're talking about the actual pool itself.
And you go back to the slide where the survey?
Sure.
I'm just.
The wall, the top of the wall.
Because it did these survey expense, do we know what certain pool that the distances are correct? Because it is a little confusing, but I, I know with the outline that you have there, the outer triangle, and then the stone wall on one side, but then. Obviously, the, on the right side, you have the stone, stone wall not aligning with the property, was there any survey confusion that wasn't at all?
Well, sorry.
I think he came back twice, because I think he was like, I probably got it wrong the first time, like, we couldn't have built it incorrectly, and so he, he came back the second time to do it. And then that's when he found out.
Was this a new surveyor who came then?
No.
With the same on his eighty bit. And he's come out three times.
Yes.
It was too late now.
Yeah, I mean, we were hoping that we were wrong, you know, there was a wrong measurement or maybe they, they mistaken. You know, this, the property line might have been the stone wall, but unfortunately, you know, up and around New Canaan, all the stone walls are not necessarily your property lines.
And David, I, I mean, I, I saw it, but. So pulling it, if, if let's say the pool wasn't there, if you pulled it closer. Could they have done that?
Well, the issue was the well, where the well location.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, let's.
So.
So we're trying to figure out how.
Is there a tanning wall too?
Uh, yes, there's a retaining wall as well, which is not shown here.
Is there a rule help that the pool has to be a certain distance from the well?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
So.
Side of the mark, uh, out of the speaker here.
Yeah. Sorry, guys.
Why don't I let Mark go through sort of the process, what he knows, he could probably also talk, you know, fairly extensively about other. Like he said, he's been doing this a long time, and unfortunately, this is the first time he's ever, um. Inadvertently done, you know, gotten in situations, and so Mark, you want to just run through sort of, uh, you know.
Absolutely.
After. Thank you.
Okay, so first thing I say is, you know, I will apologize, I hate that we're in this situation, I have built dozens and dozens of pools in New Canaan over the years. And never had this, and I've worked very closely with a lot of different departments with different types of. Situations and regulations, so I am embarrassed that we're in this. But as you can see on the survey, you know, it's a tight, tight lot, and the biggest thing, you know, that you don't really feel when looking at a piece of paper. With the site conditions is what we are looking at. The reason that we wound up pushing it directly into the corners. And again, you know, my bad, but most of the towns we work in, Westport, Stanford, Darien. Um, they do measure from the water, not the coping, so I wasn't overly concerned about it. Obviously, in hindsight, I should have been, but I was trying to make it as far away from the well as possible, because we're so close there. And that's where we got stuck, because again, on the paper. It shows the well obviously pretty close, but when you're on the site and we have elevation issues, we're trying to make everything work. That's where we landed, and unfortunately, that was also our mistake.
Does the pool have to be certain dimensions or could this have been a, this new decision could have been made to be shorter?
I mean, you know, the, the homeowner wanted a certain size and our goal was to create that size. You know, again, in hindsight, if I had gone back to him and said, okay, we'll make it a foot smaller or something like that, that's all we can do, I'm sure that he would have worked with us. You know, the, the problem was is again. We simply did not realize that it's, instead of water to water, it's back of coping in New Canaan, and that was where my mistake was.
But the pools not like a standard size, you make different sizes.
Yeah.
Yes, we can do whatever you want, you know, obviously, you know, like probably most of you know, twenty by forty is, is a typical standard pool. But if we needed to do twenty by thirty nine or something, at the time, we could have accomplished that. You know, it's just going back now, as you can imagine, is a massive project.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions, Chris?
Yeah, just approximately, you know how far the well is from the pool now? Guy couldn't.
Um, off the top of my head, I want to say it's about. Is it, I want, I want to say ten feet, I could be wrong in that, but I believe it's about ten feet. It also sits a, about a foot lower. And that was when we were, again, when we were grading and doing everything on the site, trying to set everything, that's where the challenge came is. You know, getting the elevation, so we didn't have people, you know, walk, falling down a hill. And not interrupting or getting anywhere near that we could disrupt the well.
Right, I, I'm just trying to hang my hat on, we're trying to help, I, I, we don't want to give you a hard time, but.
No, 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 I totally appreciate, no questions, a bad question, I got you.
Trying, head beats the minimum.
Yeah. This is.
I don't think that helps you though, because they could have made the pool a foot smaller.
Well, is there any other where, way you can relocate the well, is there a ground wire or access?
No, they could have made the pool a foot smaller anyway, it has issue, but it's on the same distance from the well.
Of course, if that, if that had been drawn to them also when they went for the permit, but like. That's not fully on them, you know, the town would have had to flag that to them as well.
Well, the town's flying, the town's trying to plan.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some time.
I mean, no, I think it is true degree if they're going to say that should have been us, I don't think we can retroactively force on them that they should have known to make it a foot smaller.
Well, they should have, who, who's only says it, someone.
Yeah, I know, if, if as originally drawn and presented, it actually is gonna fit, and you don't really get into it until you're digging, then.
I know, I'm saying, what point is it where you're gonna?
Perhaps they should have taken a pause, we should have been communicating between the pool contractor and them, that maybe this would be a necessary situation. Or maybe pause and try to get the variance at that time, yes, everybody can go back and have hindsight.
We actually did have the surveyor come out and state the property lines, because it was so close.
No, it was permitted for a smaller pool.
It was no, it was size.
This pool is measured from the outside.
But no.
I think they just looked it up.
And, you know, when you fill out a building permit application, you explain in detail what, what the pool is, and it was marked as a twenty by forty pool. And, you know, I mean, the way, it's not comp, or reviews not complicated, okay, it fits, sign off, you know, so.
That's what I'm saying, the plan the hand shows it's good.
But it was a twenty by forty pool.
Not kind of the cold one.
Yeah, and it still might have theoretically fit, it just sounds like. Something might have been off with the survey with how they did the well to where.
No, it's where.
The distance was.
They said survey these, they did count the coping.
Right, I, yeah, and, and I think that.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the way I see this, it's, it looks like the survey on the, on the. This side, the right side as we look at it. On the other side.
Oh, here.
Yeah, that, the survey does take into account the coping, but. Then it sounds like potentially what happened was you, um, Mike, right? Mike, when you got into it, just pushed it up so that the corners were closer to the line or no?
Yeah, I think that what happened was you see this line versus thirty five point six and thirty five. That's what they measured it. And I didn't measure the coping.
So this, but this is, this is the as built survey that was done after, the one that was submitted with the building permit. You know, just shows a rectangle, it doesn't account for the coping and stuff. And again, that's where, you know, we just weren't aware, we did have the survey come out and mark both sides of the pool, the, the triangle sides. To make sure we were building the pool within it. We did tweak it back a little bit for the simple reason that we were trying to make the elevations work with the well. Again, that's, you know, here nor there at this point, but. So we did, that's why we pushed it back, like, we weren't trying to, you know, take advantage of the system or push it back or give them more space or anything. It was more of a logistical setting with the well, the elevation, and then putting the pool back. And again, my mistake, and it has nothing to do with the town, nobody in the town made a mistake, it's all us. But my mistake was that I just simply didn't realize that you guys in New Canaan go from back of coping instead of front of coping. And I, you know, that's, that was, that's what I did.
Is it normal when someone submits a proposed pool? To just do twenty by forty or to do twenty by forty and the coping measurements when you're getting approval from the town? What's the normal customary, you know, first act?
It's always the size of the pool, the twenty by forty, and we don't necessarily talk about the coping.
So that, I mean, there's where the confusion starts, like you say, Drew, it's a twenty by forty, I still said that that's a town error for not requiring them to lay it out, we've been hoping.
I don't think so.
I mean, or we should have flagged it, it's running up against it and we know it should count to the coping.
No, because you would say that a cloud, it's not our fault, you would see twenty by forty, and you're assuming that's the whole thing, twenty by forty.
No, I don't think you are.
I don't.
You know, this is unfair.
I, I think, I think that. You know, I, I think it was, it was obviously a mistake on our part to begin with, because in the end, we're always responsible, right? So if it's over the setback line. Unfortunately, it's our, it's our mistake, regardless, I mean, the town, I mean, municipality can't be held for mistake anyway, so even if it was completely their fault, it would make no difference, right? Because that's the law, like municipality, municipality can't be held to a standard. They, we don't think they have a mistake in fairness, you know, so I, I just, I want to be clear about that, notwithstanding that.
Can I just also throw aside one thing, but. The one issue with, I hear your point, um, but it, it is typically just a rectangle, but then, you know, when we sign off on a CO, it's not, they're typically not foot off. You know, they, they tell us in the proposal that it's forty feet from the property line, but typically forty feet from the property line, not thirty nine, like. They tell fifty somewhere that never, it's not like eighteen inches or seventeen inches usually.
I mean, clearly, at some point in the process, confusion stepped in. And we can debate, I guess, all we want all night, which I don't think it needs to be all night, as to where that injected. I think the important thing for us is really to discuss if there's a hardship with the land. That existed with this property, and looking at it, honestly, I think there is, with the well position with the grade. Like you could have come here on the original set of facts and asked for a variance, and I think there are things here that we can look at. And it's a crappy situation you're in, I mean, you didn't ask for this, you asked for it to be built as it was built, so. I think that's what we should use a time for this.
I would say that in some extent, but I think you have our, our control is necessary to move forty feet, say, as opposed to like thirty eight feet, because. They're coming down, I think that's a fundamental problem here, are they on a positive?
They got, they're, they're variants for twenty five forty.
And we were, we weren't given.
You're stating, I'll just say, yes, we, we, we were. We do so many of these things and it's one and a half.
We've never, we've ever given.
In just the corners.
You remember, is that you want?
I, I think there have been allowances for it or for other similar types of structures.
Well, I mean, I would just say.
Particularly when there is like a well placement there, radiation issues.
I mean, I think they're strong on that front. And I think they're strong on the front of the screening, and they're strong on the front that if you look at it as a property, you would think the property goes to the wall. You know, so you come in, and then realistically, you would come in and not think it's thirty five feet, you think it's the thirty seven. There's gonna be no.
At least down outside.
There's gonna be no functional effect.
No.
On the neighbor, whether it be thirty five feet or thirty, or one and a half, I mean. And I think the other important factor, another important factor. Do you have the pool equipment on one of these?
Uh, the pool equipment is. Yeah, I've had it there, where is that? I'm here. Right here.
Are you asking where the pool equipment is?
I know, I'm looking for it on the plans.
Oh, no, it's not.
I think it's not.
It was on the.
The pool equipment is right at the end of the driveway, so it's between the driveway and the pool.
Yeah, it's on the plan show on that.
It's. Open tank, it's probably.
It is a little left of the.
Oh, right, got it. No, it's, I had a picture of it, so it's.
So it's right by that stone wall, uh, Dave. Dave, if you go back to that white fence picture.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's two or three slides back.
That one?
No, keep going.
That's all right.
So see the bump in the white fence right there?
Oh, right here, yeah.
No, 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 go, go back to the last slide.
He's on the delay, the white, where, the white fence one. No, keep going, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, see the bump right there in the fence in the center? That's where the pool equipment is, right on the other side of that.
That's outside the setback, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I think what's an important factor is that, is we're not dealing with a fact, how we've seen before, we've made them the pool treatment, where the pool equipment isn't necessarily a good property. You know, they're coming for a variance after the fact, here the pool, but you're looking at the neighborhood part, which is part one of the property, there's really be cut in there.
Yeah.
There's no way this is gonna find that.
No, I agree.
I mean, it's like the equipment is cut so close to us.
To your point, yes, if they had come in and, and suggested they need a variance, I, here, we might have suggested maybe an eighteen by thirty eight foot pool, or we would have at least. Brought up the issue of the coping at that point to understand and discuss what the full size would have been, so. Yeah, I, I don't know where that would have broken down or how that would have been, but as drawn, obviously, it sounds like. This was a pretty customary proposal, consistent with what you've normally seen and would normally approve, so. It's tough, because there weren't a set of facts here where it was necessarily inherently suggested they should get the variance, so.
There's no neighbors again.
Well, I was gonna answer, right?
No evidence. David, have you spoken on there?
Uh, I have not spoken directly to them, I haven't heard from any neighbors, you heard from one neighbor who thanked us for letting them know, but. Was, uh, they were actually across, they were actually across the street. The, um, yeah, Skyview, and they were like, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't notice. Uh, the Shands. Hi, Sophie and Paul Chan, who live, um, at fourteen Skyview, were just saying, uh. Noticed that the pool variance, I'm not quite sure why we were notified, given that our partners cross the street, exclamation point, but we appreciate those regardless and have no issues, and hopefully, the town feels the same way. Um, good luck.
One of the hardships, here it goes.
So the heart of it's, uh, is the regular shape of the lot. Um, causing triangular envelope in the back. Um, it's into the well in the rear yard as well.
Topography, it's stuck down that.
I'm sorry.
Topography.
So there's a topography issue that we talked about, that Mark talked about, we have an undersized lot in the zone, which obviously is creating a lot area that's smaller than, than most in the zone. So it's still consistent with neighboring properties in the sense that most of these properties have pools, they're in the backyard, in fact, this actually used to have a pool. If you look at the application, um, that I put in, one of the variances showed the pool on this particular piece of property back in seventy two. Um, and it's, it's actually totally hit setback that particular pool. Uh, what's the definition of like a pool area, what's going on? Sorry?
Um. Wait, before you go there, are there any other?
Any other items?
Undersized lot in the zone, location of setback, well, that doesn't really matter, there's a well in the backyard. It's a small building envelope in the rear, is where you feel that you could really put a pool, and really, any structure on this particular piece of property, based on where the topography is. If you look at, when you see the stone wall here, it drops down here, so really, the only place you're gonna be able to put something. Any improvement to a certain extent. Is gonna be in this small little triangle back here, and you really can't put it anywhere but in this little spot because of the well.
Yeah.
So any improvement that you wanted to make to the property could really only go in this particular spot.
Right.
Um.
And then Luke, you had a question, sorry.
What is the definition, where is that?
So it's on page fifty three, um. Three one four, the, for the, it's in the. Three point four, B, four, E, it's in the absence of a pool deck or patio, the yard setback for swimming pool shall be measured in the bathroom.
My page is a different number than your three point four, what page?
So it said that you can make it the bathroom coping?
Yeah, instead of the pool, instead of inside, the one.
So it's right there.
B, four, E.
If the pool length or patio, how do you measure?
The, other than the patio, it's in the path to the coping.
Yeah. No, it's a different topic, because you'll be seeing this one. Um, we believe the neighbors are completely, uh, screened. It's not gonna have any effect on the neighboring properties, no effect on the comprehensive plan and development. Um, and we believe that we do have a hardship based on the triangular nature of this particular piece of property and the where the well is on the property as well.
I agree.
I agree.
No effect on the plan of conservation and development?
No, the comprehensive plan and development.
Who's that, right?
What did you say?
Who's that?
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, oh, sorry.
Now, have any more questions? For all the group? Anyone here or who wants to speak? Anyone here against who wants to speak? Well, I mean, just, why you?
No, I appreciate you guys bearing us out and, uh, you know, looking back, I wish we did come forward and say, you know, is this okay? And you can get a fair group of variants or whatever it could be, but.
Or we would have just made it smaller to fit within the plot. I think Mark is right, in the majority of the town where he builds pools, it's water to water and that's what he abided by. He made an honest mistake. Like, we are not trying to pull one over or do anything. We would have gone through the process if we wanted it, or we just would have made it slightly smaller. We just didn't know we needed to. Um, so it was an honest mistake. We're not trying to pull one over. Um, so, thank you.
Um. Kurt, do you have any questions? We're going to business session. Anything else I think you want to business topic? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go business session. Any comments in business session?
Uh, yeah, no, I I'm personally focused on on where the well is, uh, you know, I think that can be part of the hardship. Um, you don't want to get too close to the well, yeah, you know, I I I believe that the party um, did not do this on purpose. We don't have a case here that they tried to get away with something and ask for forgiveness later, right? I I don't sense that, um. So I I know that's not part of the rules, but that's importantly morally. Um, uh, so, yeah, I I think with the, yeah, you know, looking at the property, the topography and, you know, the, and the, um, uh, the well, you know, I I I think that really is, you know, they, the best way to support the pool, so I'd be inclined to, uh, and go for that.
Uh, I I echo that, and I think also just a fact that came out that the gradation seemed to be even more challenging than anticipated as far as just doing full from the well. Does add to the usability and the challenges that run with the land, uh.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll make a motion to be allowed a variance. Um, they clearly did everything to be asked of them. They seem to win it, you know, that survey is done ahead of time, they have to warn them. Clearly, rules a little different this time in other towns. Um, I moved that we allow variance, and like, as it's a triangle lot, it's an undersized lot, a small building envelope. It's clearly not gonna affect the neighbors. If you're looking at the property, you would assume property lines, a stone wall, um, that they screened. Um, no effect on the comprehensive plan of, uh, um, no effect on comprehensive plan of conservation development. Pool equipment, and anything else that should bother neighbors, well, it's had a setbacks, it's screened with a fence, it's lower than the rest of the stuff, it's not gonna affect anybody. On the well, you can't move further, though, because the location of the well and it's tanning all there. Those are the grounds. Thank you, one second.
Pardon, sir.
Yeah, want to take a little question?
Um, I approve. I agree.
I, I approve, yes, well, there is.
That's a big, sorry, I mean.
I agree, guys, so much, appreciate it.
Place of singing, if you're interested.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, everything down there.
Yeah, I want to be on the phone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have, we have a viewer.
Um, before that, can I just, some administrative items?
Thank you.
So, um, I think Luke, you were technically the only one here through all of this, and I think you you came on as an alternate. For this, but so Grace Farms in twenty nineteen appealed the decision of, um, Lynn, who was our previous town planner. It came before ZVA, they appealed it to the courts. Um, the courts remanded it back to the Planning and zoning commission to clarify the conditions. And I believe in twenty twenty one, you all voted to send it back to P and Z. P and Z then talked about it, and then the neighbors of the neighbors of Grace Farms tried to intervene, and that kind of stalled us for two years. Um, so planning and zoning never voted to, on a resolution to agree or disagree with everyone's interpretation. Um, it's now back, they're going to be voting on it, uh, at their September meeting. Which means at our October meeting, you all will have the answers that you asked in twenty twenty one. Um, so the questions that you asked, so, um, hopefully, you all can vote and send it back to the court to make a final decision, so. For those of you that were not there, five people will have to be seated, so, um, I, I, so you were there for all of it, I think you were there for some of it.
I, I was there for some.
Some, some of it, and then one of people have to be seated, and you were there for none of it. So essentially, these envelopes, I have flash drives of the video recordings from twenty nineteen, it's six hours worth of meetings, unfortunately. I also have the fifteen page, um, decision by the courts that decided to remand it back to P and Z. And then I have the meeting recordings of twenty twenty one, you all voting on what questions you wanna ask to P and G.
I love those, too.
Yeah, and then I also have the video from P and Z talking about it. So those, those findings are optional, but, um, you need to make sure that you're familiar with what happened in twenty nineteen and what the court's decision was. And then the resolution will be sent to you all in time for October, um. And so basically, what has happened is, since, no, you were there for all this, you have to make it clear that you're familiar with it, or else you can't vote, but we need, we need a forum, which is four, so.
We need five.
Well, for the forum, yeah, it's, yeah.
Is there any way you could just generally summarize the issue?
So I, uh, I think you got two more attorneys. I wish I was more attorney about it than this.
They did, no, okay. That's fine.
I mean, we sat here and we're, and I gotta say, I need to refresh.
Yeah, me too.
Right.
It should be an A order, but everyone's to be part of it. And so everything's just on a cloud. Unfortunately, twenty nineteen, we weren't doing video yet, so it's just an audio recording, um.
Oh, wow. Yeah, it's in the car.
And then one final note, um, so our plan of conservation and development, um, we're updating it, the planning and zoning commission. We're doing a community survey that launched today, and so we're trying to get as many residents as possible to fill it out. It takes like twenty minutes to fill it out, not to give you guys more homework, but, you know, we would love the feedback. Uh, I can share my screen and show you guys how to get to it, um. So basically.
Did you go off the email, Kevin?
Um, I haven't emailed it to you all yet, but I can, but if you just go to the planning and zoning website, it's just a search link here, um. Love to have you guys fill it out. It's open till the end of the month, um, no pressure or what. So much feedback, just tell your friends.
The, the faces that you guys are getting ready to write it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But so before we write it, we want to hear from you.
Oh, I think if you want to be there before it's written.
Yeah, exactly.
So how are we communicating this to the community?
So we sent out a lot of email box to the organization group. We did a press release when it came to Sentinel last Friday.
I didn't see.
Yeah.
None of that, I just.
No, Sentinel, I would say Sentinel, but I.
It's supposed to be in the Canaan tomorrow, and then the advertiser on Thursday, um, and then if you're on the upper bridge notification system. I think we're sending out email box.
In the school, like, or the high school sent it out today. On behalf of them, so.
Yeah.
All the parents out.
Good. No, just saying, it's a little one different than what we do, so I guess it's good to, you know, I think if you're kind of a good read court decision, it kind of discusses how the court is supposed to have, I'm going to send go through its decision making process, it's very good, I think. I mean, I guess you don't have to read it like that, from, like, the practice a lot, but like, I think I think it's good if you have fifteen pages, um, discussing why our decision was overturned.
Right. And that's on the drive.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks for, while reading.
Yeah.
Even if you don't have, I guess, listen to the minutes, you're familiar with the meeting, but I think the other background.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the first two meetings, which are the, that each of them were about three hours, um, and then the fifteen page, um,
decision.
Decision by the court, those are the things that we must review, and the other two, yeah.
Any other business?
Um, commissioner training, um, I think I sent a couple emails.
I watched some of the videos already.
Okay, so you want me to email myself within Lola and tell us what you have done so we can mark you, um.
It doesn't have like a submit, like it just runs through, it's just.
Yeah, no, if you do videos or it is on your honor, but, um, just tell us so we can mark it, and then, um, Jeff, who you had sent me your, um.
Kind of.
Yeah, so Luke, um, so if you have been on the ward for more than four years and your license is from the state of Connecticut, you're exact, so just send us.
Finally, right?
But you didn't vote, had to be a licensed attorney.
And on board for at least four years. Okay, that's everything.
Okay.
I don't think we brought, there are a couple of thumbs up each week. And then you can afford it for a board. These rules of the boys are on the meetings, and the proper, the rules in the meetings. And I'm in charge of five year old and six year old. These are the rules they came up with. And they have to write out themselves, and then you go on board rules for all of us. Be truthful, be inclusive, be helpful, know bad words, be kind, have fun, behave. You know, don't go into a whole nother. No disobeying, be kind to the wilderness. Time again, oh, yeah, honey. That's another rule. So I think some of these are really good rules.
It is not like it's five and it's fifty year old in town, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm really proud of these boys, and they have a lot of good rules for all of us.
Yeah.
I figured I'd carry this up with me today, but.
Nice idea.
I mean, we're always at, um, following you on our board, but I think it's, I think it's really great to hear from the kids to go out there. I feel like you have time to know.
Did anyone have time to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then we can vote on that.
Hmm. Any changes to the minutes?
Do we have a question?
Um.
I had that question, how?
So I understand that Kevin has to be at the meeting, and so I think that may just wait until December.
Okay.
Um, so we'll just, if it doesn't happen, we'll, we'll just act as chair.
Okay, I decided that question, how this happened.
Yeah. Because we, we will also need to appoint a secretary.
Yeah, did we decide and where, or just to?
Rich, did you finally get appointed as a full member, like, to go to town clerk?
You know, um, I did not go to, I didn't get sworn in, I have to do that.
Okay, so you need to do that or else.
Come on, I know, she's had to tip off work, they go down there. She's only there for.
Well, I mean, I consider not, not valid if I'm saying you're here, you're saying you're a full member, you're not.
If you could, if you could do it before October.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, all right.
Yeah, um, because obviously, if, if you're not, you can't be appointed as a secretary.
Yes.
Do you want to be a secretary? I mean, you're a kid, I'm like.
I don't have this one.
Right, anyone want to be the secretary? No, okay, so you're appointed.
It's a punishment.
It's your punishment, and you're appointed, you need.
Need to temporarily, like, whatever until he is, that's fine, but.
I mean, it's.
If you just sign a minute.
You just sign.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
It actually would probably be helpful because you have to go to town clerk, so it's just, you have to know.
No, you just come at P and Z, but we can always drop it off at your house.
It might be easier though. If you're always in town, right?
Always in town.
It might be easier for you to do it, just because you have to go to K and Z to sign, and I want K and Z's open.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a little difficult.
Yeah.
That's the problem. You work in the city, it's just.
Yeah, no, I.
So maybe, I mean, you do not have to take the minutes, because they take the minutes, you just have to sign off.
A test.
And I, I first beat the minute, so there would be really not any, uh, that needs.
So do you? Do you want to give, give me the, the secretary does seem to make more sense.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
We're gonna make a motion.
Um.
I like you on that, so they.
Yeah.
All right, okay. There's a.
A second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
And then just the minutes.
I just have one comment on this, um, agenda document, uh.
The agenda or the minute?
The agenda, but I'm just raising this as a separate topic. It says on the agenda that, uh, John is still the, um, temporary chair.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's bring that.
Okay, that's it.
That's real. Yeah, okay. So.
Disapprove of the next one.
I'll make a more, I'll prove the maths.
A second.
All in favor? Fine. Okay. Any else, maybe you're.
No, perfect.
Me either. All right, thank you, everybody.